And welcome to the May 27, 2025, Towalton City Council Work Session. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a website redesign update led by Megan George. And Heidi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I am Megan George, the Deputy City Manager in Towalton, and I am joined by Heidi Stanley, our Creative Communications and Marketing Program Manager. And we are here tonight because we are very pleased to share an update on our website redesign project. So about a year ago, we launched our request for proposals. It really has been that long. And in July, we signed a contract with Juicebox to redesign the website. The project has got six phases, which are described in the staff report. The first three phases are the biggest lifts. So the first phase was discovery. Second phase is design. That's where we currently are. Third phase is website development. Phase four is testing and training. Phase five is content migration. And then the sixth phase is website launch. And I picture that one as just, you know, the big red button and you hit launch. And then so that should be a quick step, I'm hoping. The last time I was before you was in October, which was at the time we were transitioning from phase one, discovery, to phase two, design. And so now we are nearing the end of that second phase and just about to start on the third phase. So in a few minutes, Heidi is going to preview several pages from our website in their design. And you can already see a peek of it in color. And so as you'll recall, in October, when we were here, we showed you the wireframe of the homepage. So you'll see that in color with a bit more detail and then several other pages on the interior of the website. So as a reminder, our website is our number one communication tool in the city. Our 2023 community survey results showed that 65% of respondents consider it a major source of information, and an additional 29% consider it a minor source of information. We average between 30,000 and 40,000 visits to our website every month. So a visit would be anytime somebody comes, regardless of the number of pages they click on, that counts as one visit. So in October of last year, we had nearly 100,000 visits to our website. And I have no idea why that might be, no clue whatsoever, but maybe it's pumpkin-related. So far this month, we've had just about 30,000 visits. We also know that most people are visiting our website via their cellphone, primarily Apple users. And then just a little bit of history, too. So the last time we redesigned our website was in 2012. We did a refresh in 2015, but it has been over 10 years that we since we have done a substantive update to it. And since that time, a lot has changed, including what people expect from homepages or websites and how they use them, specifically going back to the cellphone. So Heidi will point that out as we get into the design. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to her.
There we go. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. So this project has been shaped greatly by a lot of extensive engagement through small group briefings with council, focus groups with community members, internal and external surveys, and internal group sessions. Across the board, we've had, we've noticed three clear priorities: a highly effective search function to quickly surface relevant contact content, a friendly and welcoming design that truly reflects the spirit and character of Towalton, and strong accessibility features to support all users. The new site will meet all industry accessibility standard standards. In fact, there is an accessibility compliance tool that's built right into the content management system, so that will ensure that we meet accessibility standards before we publish any content. As you can see at the top of this page, let's see, let's go back. Looks like we, the bar is kind of hiding some content. Okay. There we go. Okay. As you can see at the top, we have kind of this main navigation as well as a search bar in green that functions throughout the entire site. That doesn't go away. And then the biggest piece is this very large search bar that is incredibly prominent and we think really, you know, highlights what we heard from all of those priorities. That will continue, like I said, the the green will continue throughout the site. As we start to scroll down, you'll notice some great photos. And then these are different content sections that can change every month, every couple of months. But the nice thing about this is that they really highlight wonderful photos. One of the findings from our community focus groups was that residents wanted to see more photos of the community. They wanted to see themselves reflected in the site. And so throughout the site, there are lots of opportunities for great community photos to be featured. To that point, back in February, and now again in June and July's newsletters, we'll have a call for community members to submit their own photos. And we'll also be featuring that on social media. So if you see that, feel free to share. I think that will be a great opportunity to continue that transparency and let the residents know that we were listening. As we start to scroll down, one of the really wonderful, welcoming, friendly elements is that we have these custom illustrations. We think these are just really playful and fun, and they highlight a lot of what makes community in Towalton so special. Right here at the left, there's this little icon that has binoculars. And these are activated with a hover state. So this is a PDF. It's not interactive, but when you hover on it, a little information block will pop up, and that will highlight things like pumpkin regatta or other various city-related content. And you'll see that as we continue to scroll through the site. Next up, we have the calendar section. So this features featured calendar events. You can probably tell when we started designing this. It's been a little bit. But so this is what a featured calendar event will look like. And then city meetings, as well as a link to the full calendar. And as I kind of continue to go down through, you'll notice that I'm scrolling a lot. And this website does rely on more scrolling. Modern web design has evolved over the last 10 to 15 years because of things like social media and mobile app design, and it's influenced the way users behave on the internet. So scrolling feels really natural for them. They can really easily access information and are comfortable scrolling. So able to get a good first look just by kind of scrolling through that landing page. As we continue to scroll down, there will be a city news section. So this will highlight any featured articles that are in the newsletter and also upcoming events, a link to the full calendar, or excuse me, the full city news section and city meetings over there on the right. As I continue to scroll down, you'll see the community news section, so people can subscribe to the web, to the newsletter, or take a look at our social media. We have a projects around the city section. And again, those wonderful illustrations, this one would highlight Bee City, things like our parks and trails, the Ice Age Trail, and Tree City. And they're just, I think, such a wonderful, quick way to get information about the city. And they're just so welcoming and friendly. And then we get to see all of your beautiful faces in the council section. So Mayor Bubanik, and then all of the councilors are highlighted with some key features that are council-related and government-related. And then this is a new section. This is exciting for us. This is all community resources that we want to highlight, as well as a little sneak peek about little reasons that we love our city. So these you can click, and it will give you a new reason and another reason. And then this is ours, excuse me, the standard footer down here at the bottom. And this continues throughout the entire site. The next page. So this is what the landing page for the news and updates section looks like. This would be a featured article up at the top. And then as you scroll down, some smaller links to various notices and updates. And then again, we have really enhanced search functions. So you could click on any of these icons to get to a specific news type, so community, business, or you could click in the search function, or you could filter by category or by date. And then these are all image-based, and they have the, you know, the title, the read more button. So lots of different ways for folks to get to the content in an easy manner. And then a nice way to, you know, just click and get subscribed to Towalton today. And again, the footer. Similarly, the calendar function, so another highlighted feature item for the calendar that month. And then again, with the really enhanced search function. So you can search events, you can filter by different categories, you can filter by the audience types if you have kids, or you're looking for something, you know, specific to an audience, you can search there. And then you can also filter your content by month, by week, by day. And then these are the little content blocks that show those calendar items. And then important dates over here on the right, so times when the city might be closed. This is what it looks like when you're hovering on it. The color changes, so it's easy to tell you're on that specific event. And then there's the footer as well. And then I think this is one of Megan and I's favorite pages, the Welcome to Towalton About Us page. So a nice opportunity at the top for a great big photo, and then some content, some copy, why you love living, working, playing here. And then here's another great opportunity for those community-based photos. So hopefully, we'll get a great response from the community, and we can highlight all sorts of fun activities. There is another one of the little icons, so you could hover there and learn again about Bee City. And then we get to hop into things like the city profile. So you could hover over each of these and find out more about things like location, demographics, and economy, and check out the city profile. This is, I think, a really fun feature as well, having those kind of key numbers at a quick glance, being able to highlight those. And then here is another one of the wonderful illustrations they created for us. So each of these little icons will be a hover state to talk about all sorts of things like doing business in the community, maybe family-friendly events, pumpkin regatta, public safety. We joked that this was Megan over here.
Yeah, and Onyx. And actually, they created some wonderful illustrations of all of the police canine crew. And then another look at our mayor and council here on the About Towalton page. And then some key areas for this page that are really nice to highlight, like job opportunities, directory, an easy way to contact us. And then again, peppering in those icons to learn about the Ice Age Trail. And then the last couple pages we're going to share are specific to departments. So this is the libraries page. So again, we have that green search bar that kind of continues throughout the whole site, but really high placement for their search, for searching the catalog, searching the main catalog again, things like location hours and contact the library. Those are the biggest things they mentioned that were what they get contacted about all the time. So we wanted those at the top of the page. And you'll notice kind of throughout this library and the few library pages we share, they have some additional brand elements. They have a bit of an extended brand palette with some textures, and they highlight different colors for different audience segments. So their teens always use the city purple color, so they're able to kind of segment that out, and so you quickly know at a glance what audience the content is geared towards. Their calendar is up prominent towards the top of the page. And then again, these great little blocks that allow us to highlight different functions in the library, getting a card, meeting rooms, information about the Mastodon and Makerspace. And these all can be changed out with the click of a button to easily navigate to a different section of the site if we want to feature something else. An easy way to subscribe to the newsletter. And then they were working on this content block during tax time, so you can have lots of different features that you kind of pop in and out throughout the year. And then some more informational pieces, so using the library and then gearing it towards our different audience segments. And another block that allows us to highlight a great program, such as the Imagination Library. And this color is associated with the younger population, so they've, you know, tied it in accordingly. And then a great section about supporting the library as well. So these can easily be changed out if we have different library supports in place that we want to mention. And their footer looks slightly different so that we can feature their specific hours. And then the last page we're going to share today is the teen section. So this is just to kind of see a little deeper into that library landing page. So as we scroll down, you'll notice the purple is associated with teens. So programs specific to teens will be featured in purple. And then there's some great sections, so just for teens, what should they read, be a volunteer. And I think it's just they did a really nice job tying in all of the elements and then adding those special touches that the library has been using in their branding, with it still feeling like one city throughout. Another little block for the library card. And I think that's it. So we're, you know, we're not just improving the site. We really think that we're able to better serve our residents, and we've highlighted those things like accessibility and making it welcoming and friendly, and also really enhancing the search function that we heard kind of resonating throughout every conversation we had. It will be really snappy. It's going to be easy for people to find information. So I'll add, so in addition to these designs, Juicebox also put together a style guide with all of the different ways that we can arrange content on the new website. So the pages that they've put together for us so far, the ones we showed tonight and additional to those, there are those. And then we also will have a lot of different options for how we organize content in future with the site migration. So I think at that, at this point, we'll pause and ask if you have any questions or, yeah, any comments or feedback you have.
Questions for Megan or Heidi? Councilor Pratt.
Thank you for all the great work. I'm so excited about the search feature. The one thing I do like on our current site is that that banner across the top with the upcoming events and stuff. So it looks like it's down further on this one. Is it like when you go to the landing page, does it show up on that? Or do you have to scroll down to get to it?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, and Heidi, maybe you can flip back to the main page. So you would have to scroll down slightly to see that. We looked at a few different options for that initial shot, one of which would have included a rotating banner, but we found that there were some accessibility concerns with folks who use screen readers. And so decided having a static image was going to be more accessible than having something that rotated either automatically or by somebody indicating. So you do, I think on the homepage, if you do, you'll, you'll have to scroll down a little bit to see those content blocks. But as Heidi said, we'll have the ability to switch those out whenever we feel like.
Okay, great. And then, oh, I'm wondering, on the calendar, and maybe we've always done this, do we just put city events or like, for example, the VFW thing? Would that be added? Because when I go, like, I'm traveling, I'll look on the city's website. So will things like that be added in?
Yeah. So if the city is partnering or sponsoring the event, then we will put it on the website, but we won't put events that are not affiliated with the city in some way. So for the example of the VFW, that would appear on our website, as would a CIO event, for example.
Okay, great. And then my last question is like, other than typing in the search engine, if I wanted to look up, let's say, permit applications or ordinances, how would I do it? Because right now, it's.
Yeah, a bit challenging. So hopefully, the answer is that there's 10 different ways that you could do it. So you can use, as Heidi pointed out, if you scroll up just a little bit, there's that green search bar that you can click, and it'll open up. And we don't show it here, but it opens up, and then you can type in your question. And that'll appear on any page of the website, so it should be fairly easy for somebody to find. Or if you're on this page, for example, there's the big search bar right there with those popular searches down below. So utility billing is, I think, the third most popular page on our website right now. And so that would obviously show up there for us. We'll also have a couple of aggregate pages, one that we're working on right now. I think it's called forms. That'll have all of the forms that you might possibly need. And it'll be, right now, you can't filter them by department or by what you're trying to accomplish. And in the updated website, you would be able to filter that. And then, of course, the other way would be through the dropdown menus. So we can't show them here on the PDF, and these aren't the final headings that we're looking at. But we have several areas there that are designed. So if you drop down services, for example, it would then divide it into three different categories to help you make your way into finding.
Okay.
Because people don't always know what the right words are, so trying to leave those breadcrumbs so you might find it, or using the search bar itself.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Brooks.
So I missed the first part, and hopefully, this isn't duplicative. I, I'm curious, and this is a very specific question because of the, the ribbon cutting ceremony yesterday. So I tagged the city's website for the Veterans Plaza. And what was interesting about it was it was a lot of documentation, and then you could get to the map at the very bottom, but it was very government-y. So I'm just curious if there'll be more attention to things like assets for, that people can share on their social media and look up that's more telling a story versus a list of all of the procedures that we went through to buy a brick program?
Yeah, I like to call those the artifacts associated with the project. Forget where I picked up that term. I surely didn't create it. If I'm thinking of the page that I think I am, you're right, it has like meeting information and packets and the official Veterans Plaza report and just a lot of material. So there's a couple of thoughts that I have about that. One is that we are currently working on redesigning the projects page on our website. So we do have a version of that. It's map-based, and you can kind of click to see, and it's mostly land use. Our hope is with the new website is that it would include both land use applications as well as capital construction projects, so the Veterans Plaza would be included on that map. So you could hover over whether Veterans Plaza is, click, and that would bring you to a page with more information. The design of that page could include many of the same artifacts, but hopefully, in the new design, and what we're looking at right now is it'll also include images, and it'll also provide a lot more flexibility for how you design the page so that it can be more appealing. I think the other piece to telling the story of a project like the Veterans Plaza is doing Associated Press. So in this instance, we did put out a press release leading up to the ribbon cutting, and I think we will have some social media planned afterwards showcasing. So I think it's a combination of those elements to tell the story. And then the last piece I'll share is, I forget which one of our pages, but I believe we're also including like quote this on your own social media function somewhere embedded in the website so that it's easier for folks to either include a link to a page or include a copy from the page on their own platforms.
So I guess for me, the other piece that I think about when I'm thinking about this is some of these things are hard for people to find. So if there was Veterans Plaza, little bit on the parks page, for instance, then I could send somebody that I was meeting at the Veterans Plaza, the little description, the location, and things like that. So I'm just curious for, you know, also utilizing it for meeting up and sharing information that's going on in ways that people can find and understand.
Sure.
Yeah.
Other questions? Councilor Sacco.
Sorry. Thank you. This all looks really great. I have two questions. One is about the search feature. So how does the search feature work? Is it, because I've used multiple search features before. Is it just searching the name of the document and words in the content? Or is it, are we able to like add additional tags if we notice that people are searching for words that maybe we didn't think of, or that it's not in the name or not in the content?
So I think one of the things that will be really nice with the new site going forward is that they will be kind of mining the data in a more efficient way. So it will, it will pull keywords, but we can also, we're also going to have much better, like things like alt tags on photos. So when I was saying the content accessibility piece, we're going to be going through a lot more steps to get things published so that when the information is there, it's really accurate, and it's got all of those keywords that are associated with it, so that when we do a search, it's able to aggregate the data in a more efficient manner, and the search should be improved greatly.
I think for the forms page that I spoke of earlier, I believe in that instance, we will have the ability to add tags essentially to different documents that will show up. And you're right, many of our forms have official titles that have nothing to do with what you're trying to accomplish. And so for that example, I believe we will have additional abilities.
Perfect. Second question, will the, so I love like the little embellishments and texture on, on the website, and I love how it's color-coded to some degree. So will that carry over into things like our social media and other branding or presentations, things like that? So weaves through all the content that folks are looking at?
So some of that is specific to the library. They have segmented their audiences to have a specific color associated, so it's easy for their audiences specifically. We have an extended brand color palette as well that our comms team is using already, but we're, we're continuing to get better at doing so and making sure all of the colors are used in a really nice manner. There isn't a specific, like, key to say if it's a, you know, city council meeting, we're only using X color. And that's mostly so that if you think about things like the Instagram grid, that there's a little bit of variety. You wouldn't want 10 posts in a row to have the same color. So we try to, you know, change things up so that it's visually appealing. And we also try to change things up from like just a visual standpoint in general, like some things are photo-based, some are better when they're, you know, big words. So we try to have a lot of variety for things like social. So it might not have a specific key for color, but certainly, everything is within our brand palette and will be cohesive across all of the, the site.
Thank you.
I'll add to that if I may. One of the deliverables that we'll get from Juicebox is, maybe style guide isn't the right word, but it will be the elements that they used. If you look a little bit further down, just the application of the images with the rounded edges and kind of the weird corners. So we'll get all of that as well, that we can incorporate throughout our communications. And our newsletter, which was redesigned in the last six to eight months roughly, has already started to use some of those.
Other questions? Councilor Reyes.
Yeah, great presentation. I really liked the colors and the look and feel of it. Quick question on the, going back a little bit on our, not social media, but it is part of social media, YouTube channels and like, for instance, channels that are this CCTV channel thing. Would there be any way of having like a button, watch our channels on YouTube or our console meetings on YouTube somewhere around in the social media whenever there's anything going on? For instance, like there's some, when you go to YouTube, sometimes it says live or what's happening live. So maybe when there's some meetings like this, or people can see our channels or, like I said, YouTube is not really social media anymore like it used to be. Can, would that be able, would be, would people be able to access that from these, from our website?
That's definitely something that we can add to things like the calendar notices. We can add a little button that says tune in, that sort of thing. I know there are different ways to do that in social, too, where we can just add a button when we're posting. So yeah, absolutely.
Other questions? Be in the IT guy. First question is languages. Are you going to rely on Google to translate it, or are you going to have alternate translations? Because Google does not translate all websites sometimes perfectly, especially for languages outside of the norm, you know, English, Spanish, French, German. Once you get into Asian languages and stuff, and stuff like that, not so much. So how far will translation be available in this?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Heidi. I think we haven't made a decision yet on which integration we'll use for language. We know that the language button or the translate button at the top will appear on every page, but I don't think we've decided yet which integration we're going to use for that. That'll happen in the development stage. We also think that we will have a policy discussion, probably with the communications team internally. Currently, our practice is we have Google Translate on the website, but we also have pages professionally translated when they are most important for the community. And I think there will be some element of that moving forward, because regardless of what integration we use, there's always going to be some level of error. And for some content that's super relevant for. And for some content that's super relevant for different communities or really important, we want to make sure that it is accurate. So I think there will be some element of professional translation.
Because the usual thing is all of a sudden a curse word shows up that you're not aware of. Future maintenance, will staff be able to maintain this themselves or will they have to rely on a development company going forward?
I sure hope we'll be able to maintain it. I actually think, I think that there's a lot more features and functions in this website. But using it, using the content management system will be a lot easier than what we currently have. I don't know the name of our current content management system. I think it's specific to the website that we have. And the company that we originally contracted with has now been sold twice over. And so there's a lot of glitches and errors that we encounter almost daily. We're using, is it? Drupal is the content management system moving forward, which is a drab and drop. Oh, Drupal is the old, so.
We're using, yeah. So we'll, we're moving to WordPress and it's called the Gutenberg CMS. Super user-friendly. It's one of the reasons we chose Juice Box. It's just so straightforward. I think it's going to be a game changer for staff to be able to quickly update information. And because they're providing, it's like if you look at like all of these things. So for instance, this whole section is considered a content block. And all of these things are little blocks that you just plunk into the page and you add your stuff. And it's going to be so, so easy to navigate. So we'll have staff trainings and we're going to do some cross-training and really excited. I think it's also kind of foolproof in that it's always going to look nice because they've coded it to look nice. And so even if you don't really know what you're doing, if you can cut and paste a paragraph, it'll look great. So very excited about that.
We're also planning to build in notifications for when a page hasn't been updated in a while. That should make it fairly easy and some auto expiration for pages. So that should help with the maintenance. I do think it's a lift for our internal team to maintain our current website. And it'll continue to be a lift for our team to do that moving forward.
Okay. And then last thing, since Steve and Quill are sitting back there. Have they started looking at the ability, I know it's just an initial design, but you know, the biggest complaint about being able to track permits, applications, the current status is we'll tie it into the newest updates to our system. So we don't hear that the website says one thing, yet someone else is saying another. You know, have they started looking at that or that's obviously probably in the plan in the future phase?
So the projects page that I mentioned earlier will include land use applications in the same way that it does currently. And there will be different statuses for folks to use. Our current website, the statuses are challenging because there's like 10 of them and some of them don't make any sense. So we are hoping to narrow down the number of statuses. For land use applications specifically, I think there's maybe three or four that we're looking at. So it will be accurate. It won't necessarily reflect the level of information that individuals are wanting currently for the play-by-play on applications. Our site will have a variety of integrations. And I think TrackIt will be one of those integrations that we look at as well. So for the applicant themselves, I believe those will be consistent moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
The last thing I'll add, which I forgot to mention earlier, is timeline for the project. So right now we are transitioning into the third phase, which is another big phase. And that's where we're going to get into all of the integrations and see if the stuff actually fits together. Right now, we're projecting that we'll finish the project this fall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, that brings us to our second amendment work session, which is CFECC, Code Amendments for Walkable Communities. This is Steve and Erin, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Erin Engman. I'm the senior planner here at the city of Tuolton and I'm joined by Steve Koper, our assistant community development director. Our consultant Meg is joining us remotely. We have Kate Rogers in Keegan-Golick. Kate will be walking us through the presentation. And I just want to start by saying it's, I've really enjoyed working with Kate on this project. You may recall, we were here in February to introduce this project to you. They've been very instrumental in doing our code audit and our code amendments. It's substantial work and they've done a great job. So tonight we are here to walk through some of our code amendments and those concepts. And before I turn it over to Kate, do you have anything you'd like to add, Steve? Okay. All right, Kate, the floor is yours. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much, Erin, for that really lovely introduction. Really appreciate it. And good evening, City Council. Nice to be here. And can you all hear me okay? Sometimes my microphone's a little quiet, but.
Can you hear you?
I can turn it up here. I just turned it up. Is that a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. All right, so yeah, this is kind of a follow-up on the session that we had with you all in February, where we talked kind of at a higher level about code concepts. And now we actually have a draft set of code amendments that we would like to give you kind of still a sort of high-level presentation about and get some feedback from you all. So moving on to the next slide, please. So we will, just to give a quick recap of the purpose and background of this project, we'll give an overview of the draft code updates and then we'll pause for some, some questions. We have one particular question for you all, but then if you have questions for us and, you know, want to provide some feedback or have a larger discussion, we are happy to do that. And moving on to the next slide, please. So just a reminder, this is part of the larger Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, or CFECC, project or program, which is generally a state mandate to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from transportation, focused on transportation planning and land use planning. And so some of the major components of CFECC are related to designating climate-friendly areas or kind of mixed-use, higher-density areas. And as part of the metro region, the city of Tuolton just needs to comply with the Metro 2040 growth concept. There was the parking reform component, which you all passed last year. You probably remember that. There's the Transportation System Plan update, which has been a recent effort. And this current project that we're working on is the Walkable Design Standards project, which is kind of tied to the TSP update. So next slide. So zooming in a little more on the Walkable Design Standards. The purpose is promoting walkable and bike-friendly design in new residential and commercial development throughout the city by promoting pedestrian-oriented site design, connectivity and compact development. And so this is all connected to the set of rules in the Oregon Administrative Rules that we refer to as Rule 0330 for shorthand. And so project timeline, here we are in May, late May. And we, as I mentioned, we've produced a draft set of code amendments. And after, you know, additional review by staff and hearing from you all tonight, we will be refining those and converting those into kind of a final version. And then from June, over the next several months, city staff will be taking those amendments through the adoption process. So you will definitely have additional chances, chances to review the proposed changes and provide input a little bit down the line. So just a reminder, you know, this kind of set of proposed code updates, again, responds to those Rule 0330 requirements. So specific, you know, state requirements for, for the development code. It responds to the findings and direction from the code audit and code concepts document, which again, we reviewed with you all back in February and we heard input from you at that work session. We also heard input from a variety of community stakeholders, including developers and architects and folks in the accessibility kind of advocacy community and just some residents who are interested in kind of transportation options. So we've definitely factored all of that input into the draft. And we also drew pretty heavily from a resource produced by DLCD, that, you know, the state government, which is the Walkable Design Standards Guidebook and Model Code. So a lot of the language is kind of inspired and draws from some examples in that resource. So some of the key topic areas we'll be talking about, you know, things, sorry. Neighborhood connectivity, residential neighborhoods, commercial and mixed-use districts and auto-oriented uses. See the, some of the topic areas in the rules and also we'll step through these in our presentation tonight. So next slide. The first topic area is neighborhood connectivity. So this, this set of rules applies to kind of larger scale or neighborhood scale development that involves the creation of new streets. So generally, we're talking about land divisions, you know, new subdivisions, things like that. I know Tuolton necessarily isn't seeing a lot of that scale of development, but should, should any of these kinds of developments come along, this set of standards would apply to them. So as part of the proposed changes, we will be reducing the maximum block length from the current 530 feet to 400 feet. So trying to promote like better walkability, easier access through neighborhoods with shorter blocks. And also adding a block perimeter standard. So that's kind of the, the total length around the entire block. And that's a specific requirement in, in the rules. And the block length, there is some flexibility built in by allowing that block length to be met by a full street connection or a mid-block or a through-block pedestrian and bicycle accessway. And that's an existing option in the code that we've just kind of fleshed out a little bit more. And also alleyways could meet that standard. And an additional standard is to require cul-de-sacs. So if, you know, you can't provide street connections, you need to have kind of a dead-end street. In certain situations, if there is proximity to, say, a sidewalk or a trail that's nearby that you could make a connection to, you would have to at least provide a kind of a bicycle pedestrian connection. So not necessarily a full street connection because that might not be possible, but at least providing that kind of accessway connection. Right, next slide. So a little, a little more detail about some of these options. So alleys, this is something that has been developed in Tuolton in the past, but there's not really an existing set of design standards for alleys. And these are usually sort of private facilities or not necessarily public right-of-way. And it's providing kind of access to the rear of, of lots. So garages and driveways to the rear of the lot. So we've proposed a new set of design standards that can kind of provide more sort of regularity and predictability if you are going to propose alleys in a, in a development. And alleys, again, can also provide, help meet that block length requirement. And it also, you know, kind of helps promote pedestrian-friendly frontages because you're not, the sidewalk's not interrupted by driveways. And the, the houses tend to be a little bit closer to the street with, you know, again, that access to the rear. It also helps preserve some of that on-street parking because again, the street frontage isn't interrupted by driveway. So there's a lot of, you know, nice advantages to alleys. So trying to make sure that that's an option at least. And then a little more about the mid-block accessways. We heard from you all some concerns about relying too heavily on accessways and the potential sort of safety concerns if they're not designed, not designed well. So we did propose some new standards, again, sort of enhancing the existing standards in the code to make sure that there's adequate width and lighting and accessibility. Those are some of the concerns that we heard about. Moving on to the next set of standards. So for residential neighborhoods, this is, this kind of bucket of rules applies to residential areas and calls for efficient and sociable, sociable development patterns. And specifically, your local regulations need to address certain things, including building setbacks, which is the distance from the, the street to the, through the building. Lot size and lot coverage, building orientation and access. And just to point out, we are not proposing any changes to lot sizes or lot coverage. And that's kind of based on input that we heard from, from staff in particular. And I think we might have heard that from city council as well. But looking at minimum and maximum setbacks. So the existing code has, I would say on the larger side of, of setback standards. And there, there's some kind of interesting scaling based on the, the height of buildings. So we're proposing to kind of simplify those standards to a certain extent and reduce front setbacks. So allow buildings to be a little bit closer to the street in residential zones. And this, on one hand, promotes kind of flexibility for developers to make, kind of make their developments fit based on, you know, site constraints and things like that. And it also promotes walkability by creating kind of a, more of a connection between houses, front porches, things like that, and, and the sidewalk kind of realm. And then on the other hand, adding maximum setbacks in certain zones. So these new standards would apply only in the two highest density residential zones. And is really intended to promote kind of that connection again, between buildings and the street and promoting kind of a more comfortable walking environment. And this is something that we would want to make sure there's some flexibility around meeting those standards because it would be a new requirement. So one way to offer flexibility is to allow things like pedestrian plazas or other kind of amenity spaces that really are nice features for pedestrians, to allow those spaces to, to meet that setback requirement. So you don't necessarily have to have the building right against the street or within that kind of setback area across the entire site frontage. All right, next slide. So kind of related to kind of setback provisions is building orientation. This is really focused on the, the main entrance and how kind of close it is to the street and whether it faces the street. So a new entry orientation standard is proposed specifically for multifamily development. So kind of similar to the maximum setbacks, sort of focusing on this more higher-density type of development. And it would require building entries to either face the street or open onto a porch or a courtyard that faces the street, so have some kind of connection to the street. And this would focus specifically on sites that have frontage on local streets. So those are, you know, lower-traffic streets where you're not necessarily, you know, a really wide street that might be producing a lot of traffic and noise that might, you might not necessarily want your, your main entrance kind of opening right onto that type of street. But kind of on a lower-traffic, calmer, quieter street, we thought it would be kind of beneficial to have entries a little bit closer and facing the street in those situations. Next slide. So moving on to commercial and mixed-use districts. So this is another kind of set, section of rules that calls for compact development patterns, easy ability to walk or use mobility devices and direct access to pedestrian, bicycle and public transportation networks. So really making, trying to make sure that your commercial and mixed-use districts are walkable and have that access. And again, that kind of relationship between buildings and the street. So sort of similar to the proposed maximum setback standards in your high-density residential zone, kind of taking a similar approach in your mixed-use and commercial zones. And this is something that's already implemented in the mixed-use commercial or MUC zone. So we would be kind of mirroring those provisions in two of the commercial zones, the neighborhood commercial and the central commercial zones. Next slide. And then in terms of building orientation and parking location, requiring a main entry, so one, at least one main entry for a commercial building to be oriented towards, oriented towards the street or be within 25 feet of the street. So again, providing a little bit of flexibility. You're not necessarily required to face the street as long as you're relatively close to the street and you have a, a safe and convenient pedestrian connection to the sidewalk. That was something that we heard a lot from accessibility advocates, that having that, that close access to main entrances was really important. And then related to that, making sure that parking areas aren't placed between buildings and the street. So requiring parking to be either to the side or to the rear of buildings. And again, this is something that's already implemented in the NUC standards. And we would just be kind of replicating that for other, other commercial districts. And again, kind of responding. And again, kind of responding to what we've heard from you all about flexibility and also from the development community about flexibility. Allowing exceptions, if it's really not practical to, to meet those parking location or building entry orientation standards. If it's not practical or if the proposed design would really equally or better meet the purpose of the standard, but with kind of a different approach. So making sure you have, have some options there. And next slide, please. And then the last set of, of provisions that we want to talk through is auto-oriented uses. So these mostly apply to drive-through facilities, but also other uses related to, you know, use, operation, sale, maintenance or fueling of motor vehicles. And they're really intended to ensure that even though these are uses that are focused on sort of auto access, that they are also compatible with walkability and the use of mobility devices. So a big focus of this set of standards is on drive-through facilities, which I don't need to tell you, you know, drive-throughs are not very conducive to, to walking and they don't really create a, a comfortable or a safe feeling environment for, for pedestrians and folks using wheelchairs and other mobility devices. And they can also make it sometimes difficult to even access a business's services if you don't have a vehicle or if you're not in a vehicle. So the city already has existing drive-through standards, and so we're really just kind of enhancing those standards. Again, responding to the rules and, in the administrative rules. So there's a number of standards focusing on ensuring there's a, there is a walk-up window option, which can either be, I think this, this Dutch Brothers example is, is a good example of sort of an outdoor window that is easy, you know, feel, would feel safe and comfortable to walk up to. So you don't necessarily have to be in a car. It could also be, you know, an indoor space, like in a, in a drive-through restaurant that also has an indoor space that you can go inside. It also addresses things like the location of stacking lanes and making sure you're not blocking parking areas and kind of the spacing of driveway and stacking lane entrances from street intersections. So a variety of kind of safety and access provisions there. And then on the next slide, we have one kind of key policy question for you all to consider, which is how should drive-through facilities be treated in the MUC or mixed-use commercial zone? So the kind of the model that's provided by the state's walkable design standards, model code, actually pro, you know, has these example standards that prohibit new drive-through facilities in what they refer to as their downtown and main street districts. So basically the, the districts that are designated as the kind of priority pedestrian areas. So one of those kind of priority pedestrian districts in Tuolotin is the mixed-use commercial zone. And just to point out, drive-throughs are already restricted and limited or prohibited depending on the type of use in the central Tuolotin overlay zone. So we're wondering if that type of approach should be extended to the MUC district. So kind of two main options here. We know that drive-through facilities need to be regulated with those standards that we just talked about. So option, actually that's option two, is to allow drive-through, continue to allow drive-through facilities, but apply this set of, of standards to support, you know, pedestrian safety. But the other option, option one here on the slide, is to actually prohibit new drive-through facilities in the MUC zone. And as far as I believe we are aware, and I think staff is aware, there aren't any existing drive-throughs in, in that zone. So this wouldn't affect any existing businesses. But you do have the option of maybe prohibiting those in, in that zone. So I will pause there and open it up for a discussion on that.
Questions for Kate, Steve or Erin? Council Brooks.
Thank you for the presentation. I know it's a lot of work and, and it's a lot of information. I had a couple of questions going back to alleys. You're talking about, there's residential alleys here in Tuolotin?
That's my understanding. I, I might turn it over to staff to answer that one.
Yeah, there's at least one. It's off of 90th, south of Tuolotin Road.
Okay.
And I'm drawing a blank on the name of the development, but it's a townhome development.
Oh, okay. All right. And then I was curious around when we do the lighting for the cul-de-sac design, how we manage that in balance with the fact that we're a really dense migration area. There's not like a lot of dark places. And so I'm just curious around all that, how we are mindful both ways.
Yeah, that's certainly something we had as a policy discussion. I don't know. Do you want to speak to that, Kate? I know we did, we talked about it internally, but if you have any insight, that'd be great to share.
Yeah, I can, I can look back at exactly how we worded those standards, but I think if the city has existing standards for outdoor lighting, we would certainly defer to those existing standards to ensure, you know, that light is, is pointed down, that fixtures are, are pointed down, you know, shielded. But yeah, that's a, that's a great point. Let, let me look back at the, at the language and see if there's anything that specifically addresses that concern.
And then I know that there's certain areas, we haven't talked about it at all here, but that they do talk about the dark, the dark skies in particular. So just wondering if there could be flexibility in how we write that in case we ever move forward on something like that, which is just a few weeks and a, in a year, but makes a difference.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we had some internal discussions around it. We looked at the, specifically the, like the bollard lighting that's along Boones Ferry Road and spoke with our engineering department about it. The one recommendation they had, which was interesting, was that they, and we're still working on the standards, so I appreciate the feedback. Their feedback was that we don't want too much downward shielding because then at darkness, the pedestrian looks like just the bottom half of the person is moving. And that's kind of unsettling. And so we're still trying to figure that out of like, how do we balance the need for adequate lighting with dark skies?
And I don't know if there's tint options. I do know that, I mean, I had a friend that was a lighting expert that started rock and roll and moved into, and you could talk to him for hours about lighting. My next question was around setbacks. So it's interesting as we talk about the increased area in the flood zone, that there's that vertical barrier and then to, especially commercial. But if we're going to do mixed use downtown, there's the, the vertical lift that we have to give the buildings in those flood zones and then the lack of approachability. So if you have the setbacks back too far, when we were talking yesterday in the tour, it's about making very welcoming and robust sidewalk energy and all that kind of stuff or seating. So I'm just curious if the setbacks start from a place of use or the building itself.
Not sure if I'm totally answering your question, but so the, the way that the maximum, if we're thinking about maximum setback requirements, is that what you're, what you're thinking about, like requiring buildings to be closer to the street?
Closer to the street.
Right. So the way those work is it's for a, a certain percentage of your site frontage. So the kind of the length of your site along the street. A certain percentage of that, within a certain percentage of that, your building needs to be within that maximum setback area. So if the maximum setback is 20 feet and the requirement, the, the requirements are currently drafted, so they kind of scale up or down based on how wide your site is. So if you have a really wide site, you can meet kind of a smaller percentage. I think it's 40% of the site width needs to be within that maximum setback. And then, so there's, there's a little bit of flexibility there. And then within, within that percentage requirement, as I mentioned, you can meet that requirement with, at least part of that requirement with a pedestrian plaza or kind of like a pocket park type of space, or it doesn't necessarily have to be all, all building within that area. So that might help if there's kind of an elevation change. Having that flexibility might help kind of meet those, those needs. And again, there's also additional exceptions kind of built in if it's really not feasible to meet those standards. Again, based on, you know, elevation changes, topography, things like that. I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
Well, I guess my question could be, does it have to be the wall or can it be part of the building? Like for instance, if you had a overhang so that people would walk, uh, walk around downtown in those areas. And you could put tables outside, et cetera. Like how can we govern that distance there to be more flexible so that it's a more inviting? I just think that some of the elevation should be considered in the code, in the standards. To allow for more outdoor activity and accessibility. And I also am curious about ways to, I mean, you guys might have ideas around this, around like diminishing that barrier. Like if we were ever going to build concentrated wise, when you do the downtown redevelopment, would we ever lift the sidewalks? Would we ever, how could we accommodate the new building height standards to make it more accessible and friendly visually, as well as for people that need to go up? While still making it reasonable for like retailers to expect people to come inside.
And again, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I think that the exceptions speak to that where we wanted to find, we want to incorporate your feedback into the purpose. And then a, a building design that is different from what the standards are, but meets the purpose of the standards, then that is considered an exception.
So that's exactly increasing walkability. And I could see it also for residential too, if people were doing more outside.
Absolutely.
All right. And then the last thing I had was around the drive-through standards. When we're talking about barriers to entering buildings, are we only talking about barriers on the property? Are we talking about barriers when traffic backs up into the road and blocks bike paths and sidewalks? Because we have transportation.
Go ahead, Steve.
I was just going to ask Kate, maybe if you could talk a little bit about the queuing standards that are required by the rule as the default, and then maybe that starts to get at that question.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there are specific queuing standards in the, in the stacking lane, but maybe that's in the existing Tuolotin code.
I think, I think my recollection was that there were prohibitions on the stacking lane being adjacent to a street, which I think is in, I think the intent of that is getting at what Council Brooks is asking.
Yeah, I don't think there's a specific requirement that the, this, this is something that we talked about with staff is that it might have just been in the model code, a prohibition around the stacking lane or, you know, that queuing lane being between the building and the street. And there were some concerns about that being too, too restrictive of, of a site and might actually lead to designs that kind of don't make sense or maybe aren't actually as safe. But I believe the existing code does have some requirements that ensure there's adequate space in that drive-through lane and the stacking lane so that the, the cars aren't spilling out into the streets.
But I mean, I think the short answer to your question is, is that other than limitations on traffic, the standards that we're discussing tonight only govern, govern the onsite. They don't govern what happens in the street.
So I guess that would be something I would want to be mindful about, even though we're just looking at the site that when we're having such concentrations of traffic here and density as, density continues to build, that the un, you know, the unthought of problems are going to be like these backups that we see on two streets.
Agreed. And I, I mean, I think that's why we proposed prohibiting them as an option because there's only so many limitations you can place upon them if you allow them.
Well, I'm, I'm okay if there's none there for keeping on there. It looks like we have a parking lot problem to start with, so. That's it for me. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Thank you.
Council President Pratt.
I just want to tell you, I really appreciate all the flexibility you built into this. I think that's great because ideas change and that gives us probably longer time to use these. But I'm wondering that MUC, is that, it looks like it goes from Bridgeport, I-5, and then where that road cuts over by the hotel to Boones Ferry. Is that the correct area we're talking about?
That is, yes.
Okay. And then I guess this is being really picky, but if you didn't allow drive-throughs, does that mean you couldn't have a place where someone could go get their oil changed? Is that considered a drive-through?
Do you know the answer to that, Kate? I know the rules speak to some of those auto-oriented uses, but I don't know if prohibiting drive-through uses expressly prohibits those.
I think the way, if we're pulling in the, the definition from the model code, I, I believe the model code does define it to include things like quick, quick oil change facilities. But that's totally up to you all. If you want to say this applies to, you know, drive-through restaurants and drive-through banks and things like that, but doesn't necessarily apply to other kind of auto-oriented uses.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of what lands available because I do have the same concern about, you know, stacking lanes. But then I also know that restaurants tend to have 40% more revenue if they have a drive-through. So it's a little bit of a conundrum. So, and then the restrictions are, are those the things you went through last time where they have to have that walk-up thing? They can't, whatever that parallel to the road was.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you very much for the information. I, I have one question. Maybe this is not the right place, but I'll ask it anyways. As we're continuing to develop our downtown corridor and, and we're talking about cars and driveways, parking's always going to become an issue and, which of course, uh, put, provides more pressure for the individual businesses who are trying to eke out parking spaces. Are we able to maybe consider a parking structure in the center of this area where, especially in the commercial mixed-use area? The picture you showed here in the presentation where we have Teriyaki Place and C's Restaurant, C-I's Restaurant. That's a really tough location for parking in, in, in the whole. Could a parking structure be put in place where as we begin to plan out the downtown Cora, maybe get more businesses in there and not have to worry about parking spots versus just one center?
I mean, you know, insofar as this is a code project, there's certainly nothing in this code project that prevents that. Ultimately, that's a larger conversation that's part of the urban renewal, renewal discussion. So you'll convene this meeting and reconvene as the TDC tonight. And so that's a, a great question to submit there as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Sacco.
Thank you. I have a question about alleys. So are alleyways maintained by the city? And if so, are there any restrictions? And what, what brings this up is that our current conversations about sidewalks and who maintains sidewalks. And so I just want to make sure that these alleyways are considered part of the streets. And are they maintained as part of the streets?
So the, the one alleyway that we know about that exists is a public alleyway. Generally speaking, alleyways that are public are designed out of concrete as opposed to asphalt. And so the maintenance is, I mean, they don't have trees in them. They don't have thing, they don't have obstructions that cause decline. So they're really fairly low to no maintenance. I don't. I don't think that, I've driven the alleyway that is in this subdivision we mentioned, and it doesn't appear to have ever been repaired or maintained since it was constructed some 20-ish years ago.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's certain practical considerations. That's part, I mean, it's ultimately a policy question. If council wants them to be private, we would make them as such. There's some complications as far as the need for utilities to be underneath them. And so there are certain reasons why a public alleyway would be beneficial to the city overall and make it easier. But some cities certainly only have private alleyways, although most are, most have public.
Okay. And, and I would just be interested in learning more about that moving forward. You know, we have an alleyway that hasn't been, need to be maintained in 20 years. I mean, I'm sure at some point, or if there's a natural disaster or something happens. I'm just curious of how that all would shake out. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Hillier.
Thank you. Great presentation. I always learn many new things. But the one thought that I have that I, I'm still a little bit needing some help with is, could you go back to the conversation about, especially in the core area, about parking back behind? And the reason I'm asking the question is, I may not have understood all the way from, some of us did a walking tour, kind of working with the consultant and Sid. And, and I'm, I'm mostly curious about how this plan is going to intersect with the core area plan, or, you know, how that redesign is going to look. Because I'm a little nervous that some of the things that we're talking about, and if we make a decision, I think could adversely, or inadvertently negatively impact some of the goals that we might want to consider for that. And so I'm just trying to kind of, kind of, could you help me with the timing? And, and maybe how, how those communications and that overlay would look, please?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'm, I'm going to start at the higher level, and then if I don't get to your specific question, please let me know, and I'll try to zero in. So these code amendments are required. We have to do them at the end of the day. What they exactly look like, there's some discretion and some policy ability within those. They are normally due, they would be due at the same time as our transportation system plan is adopted. We have requested and been granted an extension, so that we don't have to do both of those pieces of work at the same time, because the TSP itself is a body of work on its own. So ultimately, like, we can't extend them and defer them until the time that we do code amendments for the downtown area. So we've tried to be as sensitive as possible, and where possible, take kind of the minimum approach, where any of these standards intersect with downtown, knowing also that any future code adoption with downtown will still need to be compliant with these regulations as well. So in other words, if we have a different way that we want to do things, we do have some limits in the future on those code amendments. So that's kind of the overall, like, high-level picture. The rear parking, Kate, can you remind me, that is required as part of the rule? That's not an optional?
Yes, it is.
And so the, where, particularly where we've, like, the, the different tiers of the zones, where the, the zoning districts where these apply are residential, neighborhoods, mixed-use commercial, and then commercial. And so for the mixed-use commercial and commercial, we've as much as possible taken a fairly light hand to any code amendments, and really only tried to implement those that are required by the rules. And any that are optional, we've left to the side, knowing that we have more work to do.
Thank you. That helps a lot. And so I guess my answer, because our two options, I think that's what we're supposed to be choosing from right now. Is that right? I'm, I'm, I don't know any, I, I guess I haven't heard anything so far that would say to me that we wouldn't want to go with option one.
Other questions or comments? Got to wait for Counselor Ray to everything?
I'm processing, but, I'm processing the, the options. And, yeah, so I'm just thinking of the area that you highlighted up there. Could you orient me where that is? Because I, I know I see the, I was trying to zoom in, where is it by Durham?
Sure. That's basically Bridgeport Village, right? Like, it's Bridgeport Village and surrounding. And so this is not a question of prohibiting them in the downtown area. This is just a question of, we don't really have any in the Bridgeport Village area currently. Originally, when the Bridgeport Village area was created, it was intended to be a walkable type of place. Drive-through uses were never expressly prohibited. We have the opportunity through this code update to do that, but the code isn't making us. And so, I mean, one option is just to follow the restrictions, which are, there are some that the rules may require us to make, and revisit the question of drive-through uses another time. Or it's an opportunity now, just simply to prohibit the uses and altogether, and not, and worry less about the, the pedestrian and vehicle conflicts that auto-oriented uses can bring with them.
Yeah, and I'm with Counselor Pratt, where I'm a little conflicted with saying no, prohibit completely, and not have any flex, I, I would like to see some flexibility in the code, just because of the, because things change, people think, you know, technology makes things easier sometimes, or, I, I just feel like being to say no, like, makes me nervous, because of how, we never know what's going to happen, and I just, so that's where I'm a little bound on the flexibility, like, have some flexibility. Obviously, like, lean, I, I just want to be able to, if someone wants to develop, or, wants their business to be more robust, or bring people, more tourism, or more people to our city, that's willing to spend money in our city. I don't want to restrict, be so, so, yeah, so I'm thinking of flexibility. That's, that's kind of like where I'm thinking, as I read that, those options there. Want to say completely no, but have some flexibility to, if something changes, or we can work with the whoever's property owner or developer.
Thank you for the feedback. Counselor Brooks.
Mine is not about that. The, the other question I forgot was, with the block sizes being shorter, one of the issues that I have driving in parts of our, like, other cities with the short blocks, is that there, sometimes it's not, you can park all the way up to the corner, and there's no visibility for pedestrians. So kind of, it's great, because you can make it from block to block, but my concern is being mindful about those site restrictions, and then the parking, you know, lack of parking that results. I wouldn't want us to start doing that and then have that issue where people are just flying out of blind corners. And then my other question was about the difference between the residential and commercial for these block sizes and things with these big giant buildings, like, how exactly does this look for, or are we not on the commercial part of the, is this a more than one part presentation, or?
Do you think you can speak to that, Kate?
Excuse me. Could you rephrase the question just one more time? I just want to make sure I'm clear on what you're asking about.
Well, we talked about shortening the blocks for residential and mixed-use, and we really didn't touch on commercial. We have these, you know, there's some large giant buildings that are commercial buildings. So I'm just curious for future developments, are we kind of gearing towards that direction with them, too? Or how do we create those desired outcomes without building blocks for the commercial zones, where we have a lot of heat?
So the block length and block connectivity requirements only apply to residential and mixed-use development. So it wouldn't apply to just a purely commercial development, or certainly not an industrial development. That's the way that the code is currently structured. So if you wanted to add new block length limits to commercial development, that would be more of a policy decision to make.
Okay. And then the other question I had was just around, is this, is this one part of a multi-part presentation, or is this, are, are there, is there a discussion around shade and other things that were in those rule changes?
So this is just the walkable design standards. Segment, yeah, there's, I mean, the, the whole C-FEC, climate-friendly and equitable community, is there a lot of rules?
Yeah.
You've already complied with the parking reform. This is walkable design. And yeah, you're right, there's like new standards for large parking lots and things like that, that this, this particular project is not touching.
Okay. So we could think about, as a council, if we want to make any of those areas close sort of be more walkable. I just was wondering, when we put the trails through in the places where the parks are, if we think about preferences around that? Not hard no's, but just what might be helpful to the people that are working there?
Just a few questions I have. So on the shorter block design, what would be the maximum allowable density and something like that? How many units are we looking at? Is this, we're probably not looking at single-family, we're looking more at townhomes, brownstones? What kind of, you know, what, how many units are going to be in the maximum in a new shortened block?
I mean, most of the residential developable land that we have left is low-density or medium-low density, so it's not, it's...
But I'm, I'm envisioning Cora, and the ideal is 20 years.
Cora's commercials, so we're not applying those in.
So it's not applied. It's only in the MUC, the MUC we're talking about.
Not even in, well, in the MUC, yes.
Pure residential.
Because it's mixed-use.
So just pure residential.
Yeah.
So in pure residential, how many units do you foresee? If we had land, and another developer came in, bought a bunch of land, and wanted to build Autumn Sunrise, too?
I mean, it doesn't cha, it doesn't change the, the density overall. And so adding more streets would allow fewer units to be built.
Okay.
Overall than would otherwise. So it'd be whatever the existing density is, minus a couple.
Because you'd have those setbacks, all these new rules.
Yeah, but the, so the setbacks don't change the density or the lot coverage. They just make it that the building needs to be scooted a little bit closer to the sidewalk.
But when you throw in alleyways and pedestrianways, that eats up space.
It does, so you would just simply get fewer units potentially out of it. So I don't, I mean, it's up to the developer as far as how much that equates to, but I also don't know, you know, thinking about Autumn Sunrise, I mean, I, Autumn Sunrise, I think we mapped it at one point. It's pretty close to this block length. Like, it's definitely less than 530, as it exists. It's just kind of a more modern style of development.
Because it was going, they were going for more units.
Right, meets this block length, yeah.
All right. And for the question that you had about option one and option two, I'm firmly on the option one camp. I don't want queues, you know, running through Bridgeport's parking lot. You know, it's safe, for instance, someone took over McCormick and Schmidt, want to throw a drive-through in, that whole parking lot would fail with queuing. You couldn't wa, one, you couldn't find a spot, and two, you'd have to be dodging and jiving around cars, trying to get in the queue to get to your car. So definitely option one. And for fueling facilities, is that, going back, is that like even gas stations? Like, a gas station with a shopette? Or is it like, like, a commercial filling station?
Do you know, Kate?
I mean, the rules around auto-oriented uses includes gas stations, but there, there aren't necessarily very specific requirements for things like gas stations. It really focuses more on, like, on drive-through facilities.
Okay, because I'm just thinking, you know, you have a lot of, you have some gas stations that, you know, most of them have a little shop in them now, and them having to meet new standards that, you know, people being able to walk into the shopette beyond what they already have now. But it might be a moot point, if I'm going with option one, because it won't be a gas station sitting there. It's just a matter of, it'd be kind of weird if, you know, because you're thinking of all the cars driving through to fuel up, and then would they have to make additional accommodations in site design to get in and out of the shopette? If you just wanted to walk up to the ga, you know, to the shop, up to the, I'll pick on a Jackson, you know, if you wanted to walk into a Jackson, and you weren't getting out of your car, walking to the station, but you're walking off the sidewalk through their fueling facility to get to the Jackson.
Yeah. I, I'm thinking that this does not apply in that situation, but we might want to, we might want to double-check that. There are, you know, there are still, like, ADA accessibility standards for commercial development, I believe. So you would still have to have, like, a designated path to get to, if there was, you know, an interior shopping space.
Right.
Yeah, we can check that.
Yeah, that's fine. Because I'm just envisioning, not to pick on them, but, you know, Dutch Bros, that queue goes all the way down the street, sometimes goes down to Twaltonshirewood Road. I'm just envisioning that in the center of Bridgeport. No freaking way. You know? So, I, I don't, other folks didn't mention, if they wanted option one, option two, a handful of us did. But where are people at for, you know, the two main options here about drive-throughs? In the, in like picturing inside of Bridgeport?
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I get what you're saying on Bridgeport, but I guess I was thinking more in the bottom part of that picture, by Royal Panda and the hotel, the Grand Hotel. Is that included in that area?
No.
Yeah, it is. The Royal Panda's part of MUC.
So I guess that's where I had more, but, so is there room there? I mean, and do we want, I mean, do we really want to not have a gas station there? Not have that option in that area?
And, and Erin has some information. She's been doing a little research while we've been talking about the...
Yeah, so under our existing code, we have some distinctions that, based on our use categories, a drive-through restaurant is seen functionally different as a quick vehicle servicing, which could include an oil change or a gas station. So we permit them differently. In the MUC zone, we currently allow gas stations as conditional uses, but we wouldn't allow an oil change quick servicing station in that zone. So I don't know if that's helpful with your discussion, but they are different per our code. We could look at making some policy changes where they become one and the same, if you're interested in that.
Well, I'm not sure that's the best location for an oil change place anywhere.
My, my thing, I, if you're going to have pedestrian, you know, this is, the whole thing's about driving pedestrian traffic and being safe. Cars and pedestrians don't mix. And so on our walkthrough yesterday, we saw, was pointed out to us, why people don't walk through the commons, because it's not safe. Despite the short distance, there's a lot of places where it's not safe to do. And so with making sure of one less distraction as opposed, you know, in terms of a drive-through, I'm all, no, no way.
Although, can I, I, I don't know if I want to compare the, what's happening in that area where the coffee, Dutch Brothers is, with the Bridgeport area? Because I think that, that whole area at Dutch Brothers, and it's just really, there's, there's a lot of, like, no access to another road, that it's, like, to them, it's just a little complicated than it is the other by Bridgeport area, because where the Grand Hotel is. And I think that, I don't know if I want to compare those two. I think there are two different ways of, the way they're designed, and if, I want to, I want to be able to provide some flexibility. So that's why I feel like option one would just be like strictly no. But then, I'm like, oh, that kind of sounds like, what if there's a way that someone can build something that, for instance, people that pick up Grubhub, or like, they're not there to eat and sit down, maybe they just, they need a spot where they can go and pick up something and leave. So, which is not feasible at Dutch Brothers, because of the way it's built. Just that area right there, you go, in one way, you come out one other way. So I don't know if that's, I don't want to make that comparison. And I, I, my opinion from just, I, I would just look for some flexibility. I'm leaning towards option one, but with flexibility of whoever is going to build there, we could have some, like, options or something like that. But that's what I'm leaning towards.
Counselor Sacco.
Yeah, I, Bridgeport is so unique compared to the other areas in this, in this highlighted section. And I would hate to close the door, I mean, what if, what if something does go in, you know, kind of like in that Royal Panda area? That's a great opportunity, or could go in there, and we close the door on that. Yeah, I, I, I lean towards one, for all the reasons that you said, Mayor, but also I agree with Counselor Pratt, that there, Bridgeport is, seems unique in a certain way. um, that there, Bridgeport is, seems unique in a certain way. And I don't know if there's anything that we can do to, yeah, like, have certain rules for Bridgeport versus the surrounding area, um, I don't know.
Because, because to Councilor Sacco's point, is the Village Inn site included in that M U C?
It would be, yes.
So you would allow the In-N-Out Burger and its drive-through there? In this scenario, you would have to allow...
I think that's a very unfair question, but...
But in, in this, in this instance, that would be, we would have to have that fight. And this is the chance, in my mind, not to have that fight. So, I know, I know what you're saying. But you got to think of Chick-fil-A, you got to think all these things that have queues that are hellacious, not just three or four cars. That'd be right, going through.
Well, can we limit, can we limit that? I mean, like, have it just a quick pickup or something? I mean, I, I just don't want us, I, I mean, there is an exit on the freeway there, I, I mean, whereas Dutch Brother, you have to drive through like Boon's Ferry, and then McDonald's, and all the way to the, you know, Freddy's to get on the freeway, so I mean, it's just a little bit, there's also a parking area where people commute, they can park there and commute, grab something to eat, and, I don't know, there's just a lot, it's a very different area, I think, compared, we, I don't know why to compare that area with the Dutch Brother area.
But I'm taking Dutch Brothers out, and your average In-N-Out Burger, and your average Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, yeah, but you're talking about two, ex-, yeah, like, they're...
But envision the future, what do you foresee
Right.
that would want to be there, considering the site.
We don't know what's going to be in the future, so I just...
And the site there, you got it, you have to look out that far, though. And what could, what are the worst-case scenario, what are the worst-case scenarios that could happen? That we're not thinking about right now, you know? Castle Brooks. You know what I mean?
I, um, I, I think, I think that walk yesterday was really helpful to me to understand some of this issue around concrete that we have around the redevelopment issues that we're looking at. And in some ways, this, this conversation could almost come after the planning conversation that we have just to better unlock some of the potential that we are looking at if we really want to, because I don't see why, there's already some mixed use over in the Bridgeport area, and there is open space there if we did want to do, um, smaller blocks. And I forget what the amount of money that we talked about that is locked up in the way that our city is currently designed right now, and how much more the differential is, but it was an astounding amount of money. I mean, that's the reason why we could do, Don might remember. But, um, do you know what I'm talking about, when we talked about doing the Cora, the redesign, because part of it's dumb?
Hundred fifty million, isn't it?
Yeah, so it's like, a lot of that has to do with approachability, and a lot of that has to do with, um, integrated design. So if we're going in that direction, and then we're also like, except for an oil change place in the middle of it, or, um, a drive-through, instead of having those in auxiliary places, like personally, I don't want to walk by a gas station when I'm walking, you know? I want it to be a little bit further away and not breathe all that stuff, and I don't want kids around it, and, um, so in my mind, I, that's why I feel very strongly with option one, it's not because of a particular place or anything like that, but there is a lot of big, um, property there that if it did get redeveloped and somebody decided to redevelop it, there could be a potential for out-facing small buildings with parking behind and a walkability situation for people that live close to there, work there, et cetera, and people that could afford to work there and live close by as well. So tho- those are the things I am thinking about with that conversation, so I think it's the right direction.
Because, you know, outside of the Cora discussion, way back when, you know, that, that site we're talking about where Village Inn is, was all about, it's probably too far for the microphone, was transient, you know, transit-oriented development. And having, you know, allowing a drive-through would totally destroy the idea of a transit-oriented development in that area, where you could have the kind of things that, uh, we're looking forward to on that side of town outside the Cora, where you could have people living, working, well, living, um, on a bus line and have accessibility to services, but then a big chunk of land would disappear, because there's a, you know, a restaurant with a drive-through, the whole transit-oriented development would, couldn't occur, because you have a chunk of land that's now gone. So that's where I'm looking at, you know, years down the road versus satisfying a need for another restaurant or two, or something that needs a drive-through. I know you got to comment.
I just have questions. Everyone I want to clarify, I thought I understood that you said that this would not apply to gas stations. So that's kind of not what we're talking about right now, is that correct?
It's my understanding that the drive-through standards that we're discussing today would not apply to gas stations.
Okay, just so that's off the table. And then, I get, I understand what you're saying, um, is there room in that area to actually put development, mixed-use development? I mean, we don't have a ton of land up there.
I mean, we've had, we've had a proposal to, to redevelop where the golf simulator place is with, uh, several hundred units of housing.
That's not in this area, though, is it?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Along Bridgeport Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, my only, I guess my only, my last pitch for this, is there a way to restrict, so, like, I mean, the whole issue with In-N-Out was they were, we have room for eleven cars, well, we know that's not going to be the, or, you know, the case, where, could we restrict, like, how? I guess that's kind of difficult, because you're trying to predict how many vehicles are going to be.
Not, not easily.
Yeah.
Versus saying, I mean, I'll just keep rehashing, versus saying, no. Then you don't have to get in that fight, come out with exemptions and exceptions, but I'm only one vote.
The other thing that was interesting on that walk was, um, imagining people that live in carless, want, you know, like, there's millennials that don't want to drive and they work from home. They could, that, if you talked about that particular place, you would have mixed use right by the Whole Foods, you could walk to Bridgeport, you could walk to home, you could take the bus downtown if you needed to, I mean, to me, it's like the exact place that we would, um, it's not about existing land, it's about, these are, this particular thing is not the self, this is all redevelopment, so it's like, do the current landowners have the vision to be able to do this? And then also, do we as a city, with some of the parking lots and things that we own, have the vision to help move that forward? And, um, in my mind, just getting that off the table would help make it easier, because we all have sat here when everybody does the checklist, and there's nothing that you can do, and they found the loophole, so as much as we like flexibilities, I also do not like the loopholes, um, that allow for anything to happen, and we have to say yes.
You got to turn your mic on, though.
I will. Um, I agree with almost all of that, except that's taking a bet that we're going to have good, we have some transit there, but it's not great, and I don't see it being great for a long time, so that, you know, the, the, the idea of people not having cars is great, but it's still not really a feasible thing in our part of, um, the metro area. However, I do, I do see what you're saying, that it's, yeah, and I do, um, yeah, I do have the concerns about the, the lines that could potentially occur.
Okay, so where are we at this? What's, what's the majority, or what's the feeling on option one, two, or option three is one with a flavor of exception? So I got, I'm option one, I got three. Councilor Gonzalez, you're option two?
Option two.
I don't think we're going to get unanimous today. When do you need this decided?
I mean, we can, we, opt, optimally tonight, but we can, I mean, we can come back with a code that presents two options and then make a decision as part of the ordinance, since it's split, and I think that'll give folks...
So if you, if you saw two options from them?
Additional time to consider it.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
Go ahead.
If, if we picked option one, would there be the option to have a conditional use permit if someone actually did come in and we liked, you know, they really did have a design that we were okay with?
I mean, that would probably be, that'd be an option three, right, is to add a, add a conditional use permit.
I mean, that might be the compromise.
On top of it.
That would be the compromise.
Which is a possibility, too.
But is that a staff nightmare? When it comes to like code review and application review?
No, no, it's, no, it's not, I mean, it's just that, it's like, it, it becomes a, it's...
I'm saying, if we approve it, I don't want to approve something also these guys are...
If the intent is that, that you want something, a conditional use is a barrier, and so developers tend to not like them.
Okay.
And so that, that's the thing to consider, is, is that, like, it, it sends a signal that that type of use may be less desirable and that the chances of getting approved, so it is perhaps a compromise between the two.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, so if you, yeah, if you, just a couple examples?
Absolutely.
Kristin, yeah?
I just have one more comment. Um, I, one of my sticking points is that, I mean, a lot of this is being discussed in other cities, just like we're having this discussion now, and is there going to be some sort of, um, advancement, if you could call that, in the drive-through system? And so, eh, you know, where it's quicker, where, you know, the queuing doesn't take place, and so my fear, too, is if we, if we do shut the door, and of course, we can always, you know, change it in the future, but, um, do we distract, you know, sort of new and innovative drive-through type experiences within that area? Um, so, I mean, and I'll look on my own, too, but I would just be interested if there's anything out there of like, cutting-edge drive-through experiences, um, for more high-density areas, because, you know, I think that, you know, something like that would be coming. I mean, there's a lot of things exist today that, due to density, um, concerns that didn't exist yesterday, so.
It was interesting to walk through yesterday, to your point, um, development standards, developmental styles, she mentioned change every ten to fifteen years? One thing is out and a new thing is in. So, I mean, it could change, and what I'm eyeing at is the, you know, we're going over time here, is the interesting idea that Sherwood's doing that, they're putting that drive-through Chick-fil-A into where Sherry's used to be in Sherwood, and what that parking lot in that area is going to become, because there is no walk-up to it. So I don't know how they're doing the C-FEC standard in Sherwood, because it, it's only going to be drive-up only. And that, you know, they published that that's the new, that it was bought and being, you know, the permits are going through right now, so. Okay, so do you have what you need to...
We, we do, thank you for the time.
Okay.
Greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I don't think we have enough time for, for Sherlin's, uh, implementation funding discussions, so we'll probably have to go back to that, uh, during council communications, because I don't want to have you start and then get cut off. Um, so with that, uh, we'll go to the, the council meeting, agenda review, communications, roundtable. Um, I've got two proclamations, one is for, uh, Pride Month, who would like to do that? No surprise. There you go. And who would like to do the gun violence? Okay, Maria? Any, uh, questions on the one item that's on consent? Any concerns with our minutes? All right, seeing none, uh, I think that takes care of proclamations, concessions, we'll head and do our roundtable, and we'll start with, uh, Councilor Sacco, please.
Thank you, um, well, we all have been at the budget meetings, um, and so, and this will continue tomorrow. Um, I did attend, um, our first C A C, um, meeting, and, um, it looks like we'll, you all will see the presentation that we received, but just really excited to see the folks, um, at the table in the room. I think we'll get, um, some really great feedback, um, from that group, um, and looking forward to future meetings, and excited for you all to see the presentation tonight.
Councilor, you're...
No formal meetings this time.
Councilor Reyes.
No formal meetings as well.
Councilor Gonzalez.
So I attended the Tualton Valley Fire, um, Communities Academy. I will say that it was quite, uh, inexperienced, and it was, it was changing, it actually moved me. Um, when we went, I was there with the mayor of West Lynn, the mayor of Wilsonville, um, Heidi was there from, uh, mayor of Tigard, and Maureen Wolf was there as well, so we had a really good group there, made some really good competition during lunchtime, which was awesome, we went into it quite a bit. I will say that, um, I was surprised that part of our long-range planning does not include the Tualton Fire Department's site locations. I was surprised that they have to compete against private sector developers to, to have a building built where they're going, or trying to achieve a seven-minute response time on a call. Um, I'm surprised that, that it isn't part of our checklist when we're looking to build out communities, uh, for example. Uh, the River Terrace is being built out in that section, and they showed us the grid of, and it's, it's a really tight grid, but they're looking for land out there right now, and they're competing against developers and, and things like that. That, that was quite astonishing to me that we as a city, um, wouldn't take that helm and just make it part of our development code as we're considering allowing homes to be built. You know, that, that should be part of, where does the fire department go? We do that for a school, we do that for housing, we do that for parks, but we don't do that with the fire department. So, that, that was astonishing. Um, the stats that they shared on when calls come in, they come in all the time, there's no rhyme or reason. Uh, so we went on calls, I, I went through the whole academy, it was a lot of fun, drove the big truck, and then I got placed at the, at the fire station thirty-four here in Tualton. And, um, we, we, I go on my first call at four-thirty, and we're racing through traffic, it was quite exhilarating. We get to the house, and the person did not make it, did not die, the person passed away in front of me, right there. And they pumped her, they did all they could to save her, ambulance showed up, police was already there. Um, I thought she was going to come alive when I saw the movements in her, in her eyes and her, but she didn't make it. It was very sad to see, um, that's why I'm harping on the response time, how fast do I got to get there? So that was the first, that was my first call, four-thirty, and then, and then the second call was eleven babies, baby locked in the car, and then the third call was a crime scene, this is where we went to Las Casita Street, where they chased the perpetrator into that community, Sherwood was in there, there was six fire, six police officers from Sherwood to Tualton, ambulance, I mean, it was a big deal, crowd control, um, I was, I was worried about our police officer, because he got slashed in the face, he was bloodied in the face, he tackled the perpetrator down. Um, but again, I was just so surprised on how our fire department are the first responders, when forty-two percent of the phone call, calls they get are from assisted home-living. And, um, that was weird, when they're, those organizations that are for-profit are taxing our city resources, and why they're not required to have a certified person on staff, and, so it was a very moving experience. I find myself still thinking about it, um, I spent some time yesterday with the, that's why I was with the fire department yesterday, just, they were asking me how I was doing. If I find myself still thinking through the, you know, my first experience to just come into the station and talk to them, you know? Uh, so it was quite nice. And then meeting Officer Eric, I was going to check in with him, because, you know, when, when he came to our station, city council here two years ago, he seemed very bright and young and, and ambitious, when I saw him that night at one o'clock in the morning, I think he had aged a couple of years, just in the two and a half years, and his experience, but he was stout, he was energetic, and he was happy to be there, though he had a bloody in his face, I mean, it was, it was a sight to see. So, I had the most awesome experience, um, out of all the debriefing that happened from all, everybody, everybody had just mental, some mental health concerns from senior people. Um, our last one called ended at four-thirty, it was a, it was a restaurant, a coffee place that forgot to enter their code on the fire station, and so we blasted over there, but it's just to tell you that how amazing the fire department is, that doesn't matter what they're dealing with, they have to be ready. And each time we got back to the fire station, it wasn't like, let's go back to bed, they began to help each other out on pump pressures and C P I pressures, traffic, I mean, they began to go and go and go until their shifts were over, so I did not sleep that entire, entire time with them, so. So that was a wonderful experience, I think I want to do it again, uh, just to, um, get more learned in what, things that we can do to help support them to get that seven-minute goal on a response time. So that's all I got, and the, um, the, yesterday's event, um, the Veterans Plaza was a huge success. Um, I was by myself a lot, but I was not, because I kept on being approached by people and asking about it and how happy they were. Um, so it's going to be a very good place for our city and people to congregate, so, thank you.
Councilor Brooks.
That's the most exciting fire department report I've ever heard, so I've heard a few of them. So I've heard a few of them. I, let's see, yes. So the first, the first thing that I attended was on Tuesday, May 13th. I attended the Columbia River Estuary Conference. It was really interesting. There were all different kinds of scientists discussing research findings around rehabilitation of rivers and waterways, new technology, and things that have been improved since I went to school for ecology, like way back in the day. And I was fortunate, I came in and sat, ended up sitting, which I didn't know, next to Janine, I think it's Arano, and her husband's Colin Thorne. She teaches at the, at Portland State University and he teaches at the University of Nottingham in England. They are leaders in the field and she just retired from a federal position here in the state. And they, she's doing a river class that is at PSU that electeds have taken. So I just think since we have a river running through our community that I just always try to learn as much as I can. So it was, it was very, very good. And I was one of the only electeds there and they were so happy that I was there and that they care, that someone cared about their work. And the whole thing was sponsored by Bonneville. So it was a very small cost. Yeah, Echoes of the Estuary. So it's part one of a part two. The one interesting they're doing, thing they're doing in Astoria is they're mapping with drones and they're taking all these multiple pictures, they're identifying colors and two invasive species and they're able to locate them so they can eradicate them so that all those seeds and everything don't go through the rest of the Columbia Basin. I met with the mayor, it was a good meeting, met in person. I, on 5/21, I was supposed to attend the REO council meeting, I couldn't. I was on Orkuss and I couldn't get reception, but I do have all the notes. We set the goals and agenda. There's resources. It's just an excellent, excellent committee and, or council. It stands for Race Equity and Leadership. And they're standing up a, a committee, actually. And then on May 22nd, I attended along with these other two, the Willamette Falls Walk and the Clackamas County Cities Dinner. I can say a lot, it was one of the best run ones I did. Mayor Rory is so impressive. I love how he, um, I don't, he just brought a lot of really interesting people, allowed people to shine. And, you know, was really enthusiastic about everything, was really interested to see if we liked it, you know? He just had a lot of fun hosting. Former Governor Brown was there. And then there was a, a project that they're opening in the historic city hall there that has beautiful old photographs. So I, they had a little deal going, so I got some cool historic photographs. And then I also, oh, and then I want to say they had beautiful gifts. So they had a jar of honey and they had pollinator seeds and cork. You know, things that you put your glass on, coasters, so everything was green. There wasn't plastic, it was all beautifully done. Raffia. And then, um, on the 23rd, I met with council, Metro Councilor Rosenthal. We talked about, actually, he's been attending some of the Wilsonville meetings because they're talking about the industrial zone there and looking at their planning. So it might be something that we're interested in checking out this last city council meeting and the one upcoming, if you're interested in how their conversations going around industrial area, which would probably include, I imagine, the Bassell Creek area. On the 25th, I attended Market Day at the Winona Grange and that was amazing. It's amazing what volunteers can do. I met a lot of purveyors that I didn't know were here, like the witch flower florist and the musician was Jim Marcott and he was great, played soft enough that people could hear. And then on the 26th, I just have to give a shout out again to the Arts Committee. The Veterans Plaza ribbon cutting was beautiful. It was, you know, so inspiring and great that we accomplished that. Also Emma Gray did a great job speaking along with our very esteemed electeds. And then the Memorial Day Remembrance was extremely touching and I'll let other people talk about that. The picnic was fun. I had a little group of people that were being so sort of supportive and sweet to me. And then we did that downtown tour, which was very informative and I'm really glad that I went on it because it's helped me sort of focus in a certain direction. And that's what I've got, if anybody, oh, and then I want to remind people it's Pollinator Month in June. I have some great Cersei stuff, if anybody wants it, I will forward it along. If anybody's interested in any of the information that I've talked about with REO, the Estuary information, any of it, just reach out, let me know and I'll be happy to send you an email. And welcome to the ladies that we'll hear from later.
Council President Pratt?
I'm trying to go fast because we're running out of time here. So anyway, so on the 14th, I went to C4 Metro Meeting and the exciting thing for me personally was that the Metro Regional Housing Strategy, Metro's actually talking about looking at accessibility for seniors. Yay, anyway. Then I went to the Cora Meeting, which was really interesting and I think there's some really great people on that, in that group that will speak out and help guide that. The Budget Advisory Committees, the, I went to Tuolton Together Key Leader Meeting and that was, that was really interesting, looking through the different evidence-based programs and how they could be used. Then the Clackamas County Associations Dinner, we went on a tour of the, the locks. That was really fascinating and it was great. I went to the Grange Gathering Market and there were quite a few vendors and I spent a little money on some food there, which was delicious, so that was fun. Yeah, and then yesterday, the ribbon cutting, the VFW ceremony, the yummy free hamburger. And then the, the tour with Sid was very int, it was really informative, more than I expected, the thoughts that Michelle was throwing out, so I was really impressed with that.
Real quick, want to thank Mike and his staff for leading the tour for Erin Chen on 65th Borland and Sagert. Erin Chen got a really good idea of what we're looking for in our earmark. Was super positive, especially about the dollar amount that it's very doable for an earmark. It's just a matter of whatever, you know, the price is kicking and never get there, but very supportive. I want to thank Council Hoyer for inviting me to the LEAP slash Tuolton Together National Health and Prevention Week event at the high school. What really impressed me the most was the lived experience of those folks from NAMI of the effects of mental health issues on their lives. To hear from someone who's endured it for 15, 20, 30 years is, is unbelievable to hear, for lived experience. The GPA Board Meeting, we've got a legislative update. The GPI is asking the legislature for $2 million in this session for workforce development in the Portland metro area. The MMC Meeting, former Congressman Blumenauer was there along with Tyler Frisbee to present on the Institute of Portland Metro Studies. It's going to be a think tank for meshing of ideas for the Portland metro region, a third party, if you will, to help advocate for certain things in the region where we all can work together on efforts like transportation, public safety, you know, homelessness, where they don't have an agenda, they're just trying to coordinate and act as the broker to make it happen, especially with the connections that Congressman Blumenauer has. The GPI Small Cities Consortium Meeting was fascinating. The State Employment Department presented economic trends, employment trends, the impacts of tariffs. We heard Portland, GPI's had several wins in attracting companies to the Portland metro area. Also have had one failure and the big, the failures because of the uncertainty in the economy due to the federal administration, this German company is saying, uh-uh, not right now until things calm down. We had a Southeast Washington County Mayor's Meeting. Commissioner Snyder presented to the four mayors in the area and gave the latest update on the Washington County Budget, Library and MSTIP situations. And I get, yesterday, I want to thank all the park staff that was all hands-on, you know, on, on deck yesterday on a holiday to do the ribbon cutting. It went off very well, as Council Gonzalez said, I just got rave reviews. People really enjoyed it, they liked the site. Want to thank Commissioner Snyder, Council, Chairman Harrington and Congresswoman Andrea Salinas for taking times out of their Memorial Days to come and speak. Thank Jesse at the VFW and all his folks for the, for the memorial service. And then Dave Dalton and all his Rotary Crew for the barbecue. And with that, we have like a minute left. So we'll go end the session and we'll have a potty break for folks and we'll come back at 7:05.
Recording stopped.